Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. Will you all please write for regular meeting agenda item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Perez. Mr. Perez, will you lead us, please?
Yes, good afternoon, and we do have Pastor Elude Garcia from Freedom Life leading us in the invocation, and I will follow the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Let's try today. Father, I want to thank you for a city that honors you, that puts you first. Thank you. I pray peace, I pray rest, even through all the stuff that we're about to do and talk about. I thank you, Father, for our kids that are involved in sports, that are involved in something that's been teaching them about ethics and teaching them about character. Lord, I want to thank you for all the coaches that are represented here. I pray that coaches would teach more than just to win a game, but they would teach the kids how to win in life. It's a journey, and I'd teach them how to, even when they lose, how to use that loss as a gain. And I thank you for everything that the coaches are teaching our young people in our city. I thank you for a city that loves our kids. I pray that you would raise up great kids in our city, that it would be through our kids that our city would be in the map, or that Mission would be known because of what you're doing in our children, in our kids in this city. We pray blessing over our leaders, for City Council, for our mayor, God. Let this be a meeting that honors you, that everything that we say, everything we do, God, brings you glory. Bless this time, bless every person. I pray blessing, I pray health, God, anyone who's sick, anyone who's struggling with issues. I pray people that are showing with cancer and diabetes. I declare the power of the Holy Spirit to fall in this place, in this building, as we honor you. You bring healing to their bodies, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Regular meeting agenda item number three, Mr. Benson, will you come forward to the podium and, Mr. Benson, will you come forward to the podium and lead us in agenda item number three, please?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Elude, I'd like to thank you for your words. I always like to thank the Lord, and you did it for us, but I'd also like to thank the mayor and City Council for providing us the funds and everything that we need to provide summer program that we do for our TAF program. Not only is it for the TAF program, but also for our Gustaf Goldie program. These programs provide everything that we need for the kids, keep them active, keep them healthy. It also helps them prepare for their sporting events as they go up into junior high and high school levels, too. But none of this would be possible without your keen understanding and the benefit that it provides, not only the kids, but also for the parents, so they can have peace of mind, because I don't know what it's like to have kids at home to maintain and keep that summer calm all summer long down. But it also keeps them out of the summer brain dump, as they call it, in the day they leave at school. But anyway, we did quite well this year, but I'd like to invite George Chop up. He's got our results of what we were able to do.
Thank you all for having us. This summer, we had a good summer. Our TAF tennis programs, tennis, had eighty-three participants, went up to College Station, brought back six gold, twelve silver, and two bronze. They did very well. Track registered one hundred and nineteen athletes, took twenty to the Games of Texas, and brought back one fourth. That was tough up there for our track team. Swimming, had two hundred and sixteen individuals sign up, sixty-one qualified for the Games of Texas. We brought back five gold, four silver, and one bronze. Also, the thirteen, fourteen-year-old age group now set another state record. The Mission Marlins, with the City Mission Parks and Recreation, now holds three state records in the relays. We introduced three new programs to our summer. We introduced diving. We got nine people signed up. Archery, we took over, and we had twenty-one people for four sessions out there. They really enjoyed it. It's gonna be big again next year. And introduced pickleball. Had eleven people register. In archery, we had a father and a daughter go up to compete at the Games of Texas, and both won golds. Okay? But that is all Gustaf Goldie. We register three hundred and sixty kids per session. We had four sessions. All four were full for fourteen hundred and forty kids overall.
Wow.
And do a soccer swim camp. We do four sessions there. We limited it to fifteen, and that was sold out, another sixty kids. So we thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Are there any parents, are there any parents or grandparents that are representing these children that are here right now being recognized? If you please stand up and get recognized, please.
Want to take a picture with the participants?
You want to, over here? Please come up so we can take a picture with the council. Now we need to make room for the council and Mr. Perez also. Love the zulas. Is camera still? Thank you. Keep it up, keep it up. As they exit, I would like to call regular meeting agenda item number four. Mr. Arrevalo, will you, you are recognized to come to the podium, and the chair recognizes you, Mr. Arrevalo.
Good evening. We're just waiting for the kids to come in. Three and four-year-olds are tough to control.
That's important.
We're just missing one more team. Take your time, take your time, sir. This is a precious moment in Mission. The mayor and City Council, today we are extremely excited to be able to present our teams that represent the city of Mission. It's been a long journey since March that we did the opening ceremonies. They went through the two-month season in May. We selected teams, the best kids from every division, and from there they went on in June to play in the invitationals and sectionals and so forth. And in July, they were able to compete to advance to the World Series. Some of them went to Houston, and the other ones were able to advance to Louisiana. So at the age of three through twelve, we have a representation here. So, you know, with that said, I want to introduce all the teams. Remember, these are three- and four-year-olds, five- and six, that played not only just one game on a Saturday when it's a hundred degrees or at six o'clock. They played three and four games sometimes per day. And you're looking at playing week after week after week. So first of all, also, we'd like to thank all the parents that put a lot of effort into their kids, and all of our volunteer coaches. Give them a big, big hand.
I guess if we have the parents and the audience, or the grandparents, please will stand up and be recognized, please.
So we have a great community that have come together to help each one of them advance. So today, I want to introduce our first team, and this is the eight U softball girls. And this is with coaches, head coach Madera, Coach Minten, and Coach Jonathan O'Caña. Give them a hand. And these young girls of eight and under, they were able to go to the tournaments. They went to sectionals, regionals, and in regionals, they were able to qualify for the World Series, which they had an amazing experience out there in Louisiana. So give a big, big hand to the eight U venom with Coach Madera. I also want to introduce, we actually had a lot of talent in our eight U girls, so we had a second team. So this is the eight U first team, and this is Coach Sotelo, and also Coach Reyna, Coach Rodriguez, and Coach Cochran. So give them a hand. They got first place in the first invitational, second place in the second invitational. They were able to qualify in sectionals for getting first place, and then advancing in regionals, and made it all the way to Louisiana at the World Series. Give a big, big hand to the eight U girls. And they're all very proud of their medals. They have their World Series medals and all their trophies that they collected along the way. Our third team, this is our four U. So this is three and four-year-olds that are barely learning how to walk. Now they're actually learning how to hit and run under pressure and so forth, right? So this is the Mission Rangers, our four U composed. We had eight teams, eight to ten teams. We put in twelve of our best kids in there. So this are coached by Coach Cody De La Garza, Coach Acosta, and Coach Enriquez. Give them a big, big hand. This is the first time ever that our four-year-olds advanced to the World Series. I never had it, and they got first place, well, they got second place in the first invitational. They got second in the second invitational. They got third in section, they got second in sectionals, second in regionals, and when they went to the World Series, they advanced to the final four, and ended up coming down in third place in the World Series in Houston. And then our last team, the Mission Avengers. They were the six U All-Stars, composed of five and six-year-olds, and their head coach is Coach Minten, Coach O'Caña, and Coach Rick Valverde. Give them a big, big hand. These little ones were able to get second place in the second invitational. They got first place in sectionals. They advanced to regionals and got second place, played actually, I think, like six games to advance to the World Series. They played like four games on a Saturday. And then when they went to the World Series, they made it to the championship game. They lost by two in the championship game, but they were runners-up in the World Series in Louisiana, so they're the highest that we've ever had. So a big, big hand to the Avengers. So I would actually thank the mayor, the council, or city manager, and all the people that were able to put this together. I know we had, you know, calling everybody from the cops to the fire department because of the heat or the parking. As you can see, all the parents, you know, parking, you know, parking is tough when you have so many parents and grandparents visiting our kids. So I want to thank the entire community for being behind them. They fundraised, 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 able to go and come back. So again, give a big, big hand to all of our teams today. And I don't want to forget, but the two staff that made all this happen, and I want to give a big, big hand to our staff, our coordinator, Mr. Abraham Gutierrez, and assistant, Mr. Haye Rodriguez. Give him a hand. Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Arrevalo. The only thing I can say on behalf of the citizens of Mission is thank you very much for taking the time and being ambassadors of good will in the young ages that you are. Continue, continue your future and bring back more accolades for the city of Mission and practice, and stay in school, you know, stay in school, because that'll give you an opportunity for you all to hit on with your sports. You know, sports are great, you know, they will develop you as a human being as you go along. And on behalf of all the citizens of Mission, and I'm sure I'm gonna let the council, each one of them, say a few words also, because this is a great day in our neighborhood, a great day in the city of Mission, and a great day in youth development here in Mission. I'll start with my left, Mr. Vela.
Just want to congratulate everybody. They did a real good job.
I want to thank everybody for taking your time to, that you've put into these accolades. Like Mayor was saying, it took a lot of time, a lot of effort, and it takes, you know what they say about, it takes a village to bring up a child, and you've got a great village going on. So congratulations.
Mr. Plata?
I just want to congratulate you for your accomplishment, and this is what the mission is all about, family-oriented community. And thank you for all the parents and grandparents for supporting them, and to all of the sponsors that helped make this a success summer.
Mr. Choa?
Yes, thank you so much to your coaches. I think that for all of us here in this room, I think it's something to say, because you all volunteer your time, countless hours, and away from your family, but I'm sure each one of you out there have a child that's in the sport, I hope. Are they, each one of you have somebody? That's so awesome. That's just such an amazing experience. I love seeing children happy and playing a sport that they really do love. You guys keep it up, because you never know, you can get a scholarship when you go away to college. So amazing day for Mission. Thank you. And I'm super jealous. I'm jealous of your shorts, Mama. Your shorts are awesome. You all need to make your way and see this young lady's shorts. Did you do that yourself, or no? You bought them like that on? I want some. It says girl power. Awesome, and all this stuff. Really neat.
Mr. Perez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, congratulations, boys and girls. Job well done. Thank you again, coaches, for taking the time, dedicating your time to take these young children to fulfill their accomplishments that they did. You know, appreciate you all's patience and leadership that you all do for these young individuals that are learning the sport. Again, thank you, parents, for not only doing the fundraising, but also to support your children and, of course, our city. So thank you all very much. Congratulations. Thank you.
Two final notes from the mayor. One of them is, I did my time coaching like you all have done your time donating, and your time and effort every day, and going through practice after practice after practice. I didn't take my teams to the World Series, but all I can say is some of the coaches that are with here, I coached them when they were in T-ball and voice club, and continue that process of sharing that with the rest of your children that you have. Again, congratulations on behalf of the city of Mission, and see you, Mr. Humberto Garcia. Could figure out a way how we can take a group picture, a group picture with this, Mr. Garcia?
One team at a time, Mayor.
One team at a time? Do you want to break it down, one team at a time? You made it too easy. Okay, we'll do that. Staff, take hold. Mr. Arrevalo, take hold.
Can we make that?
Yeah, one team, yeah.
Yeah, because I love the flags and the picture.
Yeah, we can get a couple of staff members back here. You want to come over here, Abraham?
Yeah.
You can go back here.
Yeah. Guys, let them pass. Move up, guys, move up.
Keep going.
Wait, one with April.
One more, one more.
Yeah, she's part of the voice of the club.
Can you see there? Yeah, you're gonna kneel down. You ready?
Rise up, rise up.
Come on, Anna's dirty hands.
Did you get me? Uh-oh, trophy fell. Okay, now the camera, the city camera's next. Everybody smile, right here. Smile.
Look at, sit up, straight like that.
Hey, look at the crowd.
Hey, cheese, guys. One, two, three.
This guy hits a great job, eh?
You can do that.
This guy hits a great job, eh?
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
This guy hits a great job, eh?
You can do that.
This guy hits a great job, eh?
You can do that.
This guy hits a great job, eh?
Thank you.
You need another napkin?
You know I'm gonna have to.
All right.
Good job, guys. Good job, jumping awesome.
Here, we got another fan over here. That's for you.
You all move it right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You want me right there?
Yeah.
Slide over, all right?
Yeah.
That one?
How is it?
Here, we got another fan over here. That's for you. For sure.
You all move it right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You want me right there?
Yeah.
Slide over, all right?
Yeah.
That one?
Can I hold the banner?
How does everybody else have this?
I think that it'll look better if we go down.
Can I hold it up here?
Yeah.
Can I go the banner there?
The banner's on the floor.
Come on, guys, turn to the front so we can, the banner can see. This is it. You see, okay?
I'm not sporting at all.
Oh, you're holding it low. The kid.
Yes. Yes. Yes, I told you.
Oh, okay. I got another six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. I got another six.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I got another six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I got another six.
Thank you.
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 Bye-bye, good job. Thank you, thank you, bro.
He went to the leader.
We'll let them exit a little bit as we
Personal plan next time.
Continue with our regular meeting agenda item number five. Mr. Perez?
Yes, Mayor, we do have Ms. April Chapa representing Americans Cancer Society and she'll be doing a presentation.
The chair recognizes Mr. and Ms. April Chapa. To the podium, please, and I'll let you introduce your partner.
Yes, hi. Good evening, City Councilor Mayor. I'm April Chapa of the American Cancer Society.
Hello, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Paola Lopez. I'm the Marketing Director for Mission Regional Medical Center.
And we're here today to announce a wonderful partnership between the American Cancer Society and the Mission Regional Medical Center and their 10th Annual Mission Pink Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. So, last year we had a Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk at the Mission of In Center and Mission Pink was also in their ninth year last year. So, this year we have decided to combine to one walk benefiting the American Cancer Society and the citizens of our lovely community of the whole Rio Grande Valley, but of course hold it all in our lovely City of Mission as Mission Pink. So, I have a little small parallel video and we have some gifts for y'all because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is why everything is pink, and we hope to have the biggest pink event in the whole Rio Grande Valley. Now, Mission Pink surely was the biggest, but now it's going to be even bigger combining our, both of our efforts together, combined for services provided for our community, free wigs, free rights to treatment, things of that sort, and of course, Mission Regional also has their own benefits as well. Yeah, so we're going to start the video.
I can hear, I can hear something.
Mission Pink Fight Camp. Join us on October 12th, 2019.
You want to?
The Mission Regional Center.
Rewind it. Good job.
Hi, I'm Paola Lopez, Marketing Manager at Mission Regional Medical Center.
And I'm April Chapa, Senior Community Development Manager for the American Cancer Society. We're excited to announce our new partnership with the American Cancer Society for the 10th Annual Mission Pink Fight Camp. Join us on October 12th, 2019. The Mission Regional Medical Center helps make strides against breast cancer. The Mission Pink Fight Camp aims to raise awareness on the importance of breast cancer for the early detection of breast cancer. Making strides against breast cancer helps provide free education programs here in Rio Grande Valley and raise the cancer research. Margaret Sanders will show your support for the fight against breast cancer. To learn more about the 10th Annual Mission Pink, thank you in the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, phone contact 956-682-8329. Together for stronger. So, with that, we'd like to invite the whole Rio Grande Valley, but especially the City of Mission, the mayor, and council members, and city manager Randy to join us at this event. It will be October 12th at the Mission Regional Medical Center, beginning at 8:30. Of course, registration and all that's at 7:00. We have the website, we have our local phone number for our office, 956-682-8329, and we have all of our social media, so you can sign up there.
Paola, yes. And just to let you know, for Mission Regional, this is something really big, you know, to partner up with the American Cancer Society. As April mentioned, it's a big event and by bringing these two powerful corporations, it's going to be even bigger, so that's great for the City of Mission, you know, to get more exposure out there with the whole community. So, thank you, city members, city council members. I know we're going to be reaching out for help, but that will be later on, so thank you so much for your time and all your support.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alabama, please.
Thank you.
Alabama, please, in College Station.
Thank you, Ms. Chapa and Ms. Lopez, both of you, for this fine presentation. Appreciate it. Regular meeting agenda item number six, Ms. Enriquez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, the board election and nomination and board ballot submissions is now over, so we have a full board and we will be sending out a press release so we can welcome all our new members. In the chamber world, on Thursday, we have a member network event that we partner with the RG Vision and it will be benefiting the Teach for America and it's going to be this Thursday at 6 o'clock. We have set our next Buenas tardes luncheon for September 12th. The topic is community leaders in the spotlight and it's going to be a panel discussion and among those, among the panel, it's going to be women in the education, banking industry, and entrepreneurs, so that should be an awesome upcoming event. We've also set our annual awards gala for October 17th where we will award our Business of the Year, our New Business of the Year awards, and sponsorships opportunities and tickets are now available, so it's never too early to get your ticket. In the tourism world, we have begun the Butterfly Festival planning. We have, we do have interests, some interests from Monterrey, no, Matamoros, and so they're interested in partnering up, doing like a festivity option for some of our major tourists that come for the Butterfly here festival that we have, so we're looking into that. We are also working on a restaurant guide that we will be sharing with our hotel industry for when any visitors come into town and they're wondering if there's a vegan restaurant in town or a vegetarian or pizza, we will have that available. And the pre-planning has begun for the convention efforts that we will be partnering up with the city and the convention center. We have a standing meeting, I have a standing meeting with the Assistant Deputy City Manager because we are going to look at what is the history, the relationship that the City of Mission has had with Monterrey and we'll be targeting that. So, we'll be, we're going to start planning on that. And on behalf of the Tourism Bureau, because the city council and mayor, you are all promoters of the City of Mission, this is our first tourism decal that you can put in the back of your card. There is a criteria that you have to meet, so if anybody else is interested, come over to the chambers, send me an email, but I present this to y'all, so here you go, yes.
And that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, any question by any of the council members or CEO of the chamber?
Yes, perfect. And the magnet, they go ahead and they represent the historical and what we stand for, La Lumita, as well as our home of the grapefruit. And Discover Mission is the, you know, the Tourism Bureau brand that we have for the City of Mission, but we're going to start first with identifying where we are on the map, and that is Mission, Texas. So, we're starting here, okay? Thank you.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Regular meeting agenda item number seven, departmental reports. Mr. Perez or anybody that needs to, any of the council persons would like to address any of the department heads as written into your packet. Any questions, anything?
I'm going to approve that report as presented.
We have a motion on the floor to accept departmental reports presented.
Second.
We have a second in this opening for final discussion. Final discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving right along to regular meeting agenda item number eight and citizens' participation, Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody that has been, that has registered?
Yes, Mayor Council, we have Mr. Jesús Mendoza who would like for me to call him. He's not able to attend the meeting, but we will attempt once to call Mr. Mendoza.
Can you, for the audience that is here and in the audience that is on Facebook, can you explain to the process that we're doing on behalf of this citizen?
Yes, Mayor Council, basically, Mr. Mendoza is unable to attend our city council meeting and so because he does fall, there's a certain criteria and he does fall under that criteria, so we are able to tell him that we will call him during citizens' participation. What we are supposed to do is we will call him once. If he does not answer, we will not call him again, so he understands that, that, you know, we don't know exactly what time we will be making the call, but, you know, he will be waiting for the call.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Mendoza?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is Ana Carrillo with the City of Mission. Mr. Mendoza, you can start with your citizens' participation.
Okay, can you hear me okay because it's breaking?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mendoza, we can hear you.
Can you, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm ready. You tell me when.
You can begin, sir.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jesús Mendoza and I will be giving my phone number. I have been homebound for more than seven years with light trapping and electrosensitivity, which is caused and aggravated by the same microwave radiation reaching police officers at work. My electrosensitivity has been recognized by federal and state agencies and by courts as a physical medical condition and as a disability. The following is some of the information sent to the New York Police Officers detailing with medical, legal, and scientific evidence how the microwave radiation at work is increasing the police officer's rate to suicide. Exposure to power levels of radiation above the federal safety limits causes harm even to healthy and strong adults. The cell phones, computers, and all wireless devices used by police officers emit power levels of radiation above the federal safety limits. Police officers are being exposed at work to more than 250,000 units of microwave radiation and exposure to less than 150,000 causes electrosensitivity and brain, eye, blood, nerve, heart, and DNA damage even to the children of our police officers. Exposure to 10,000 units of microwave radiation breaks the blood-brain barrier to allow toxins, including painkillers and other medications, to enter and damage the brain, which in turn can cause anxiety, depression, and aggressiveness, and can impair judgment in emergency situations. Chronic exposure to wireless radiation increases by more than 150% the risk to suicide. The same microwave radiation reaching police officers at work has caused electrosensitivity in others that we have to children, teachers, doctors, attorneys, scientists, firefighters, police officers, and even to the former director of the World Health Organization. Even when electrosensitivity is reaching epidemic proportions, most doctors are in the dark or in denial of the harmful cause by radiation and continue misdiagnosing, mismedicating, and mistreating the harm being caused by exposure to radiation. Measures that can be taken to prevent more officer tragedies include tools for mitigating technologies used by the Secret Service and by the Water Patrol, measuring the officer's cumulative exposures to radiation, educating officers to avoid unnecessary radiation exposures at work, and periodic medical examinations by doctors with expertise with electrosensitivity. A copy of this document will be submitted to Mayor Ocaña and to the council members so they can forward this information to our police officers. Our emergency responders cannot defend themselves from microwave accretions.
Would you advise somebody, this is three minutes.
It is 956, yes.
I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up, Mr. Mendoza. Thank you very much.
I just want to give my telephone number and that's it.
Okay, the chair will recognize you.
It is 956-583. The same microwave radiation reaching police officers at work has caused electrosensitivity and others severe harm to children, teachers, doctors, attorneys, scientists, firefighters, police officers, and even to the former director of the World Health Organization. Even when electrosensitivity is reaching epidemic proportions, most doctors are in the dark or in denial of the harmful cause by radiation and continue misdiagnosing, mismedicating, and mistreating the harm being caused by exposure to radiation. Measures that can be taken to prevent more officer tragedies include: Use of mitigating technologies used by the Secret Service and by the Water Patrol; measuring the officer's cumulative exposures to radiation; educating officers to avoid unnecessary radiation exposures at work; and periodic medical examinations by doctors with expertise with electrosensitivity. A copy of this document will be submitted to Mayor Ocaña and to the council members so they can forward this information to our police officers. Our emergency responders cannot defend themselves from microwave accretions.
Would you advise on the, this is three minutes.
956? Yes.
I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up, Mr. Mendoza. Thank you very much.
I just want to give my telephone number, and that's it.
Okay, the chair will recognize you.
956-583-7812. And I'm sorry, but the line is breaking very bad.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza.
You're welcome.
Any other on the citizens' participation?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Jim Barnes.
Mr. Jim Barnes, would you, the chair will recognize you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmen and women. My name is Jim Barnes. I live in Mission. I'm an owl, and I don't usually respond to rumors, but I heard today that you're thinking about increasing our taxes by five cents. That is eight percent approximately, and with the increase that you're going to also see in revenue from the appraisal, that's going to be about 12% you're going to get. That I see you're going to do before 1st of September, which HB2 will hold you there to 3.5% revenue growth. The problem is, that 12% is going to be on the backs of Mission's citizens. Many of them are going to have to tighten their belt. What have you done to tighten the city's belt? I mean, 12% in one year? That's phenomenal. I hope we can afford it. Meanwhile, take a look at whether we can cut, because there's got to be some fat somewhere. 12% is outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Carrillo, anybody else?
Yes, we have Ms. Agida P. Arinata.
I'm, I'm on the agenda item.
Oh, on the agenda item, okay.
Is it one of the public hearings that we're going to hear?
Yes.
We'll call you, ma'am, at that time.
We have Raymond Longoria.
Mr. Raymond Longoria, the chair recognizes you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Raymond Longoria, 1217 East Griffin Parkway. Appreciate it, chamber, councilmen and councilwomen. I just wanted to talk a little bit about an item that was talked on 7/22, item 3.8, and the meeting about authorizing to engage in a firm. It was my understanding that you folks would take time in a workshop to interview any of your engineers and then decide, but I saw in the meeting, you were presented by an employee of the city, that this is the recommendation that we're going, and I realize that y'all can discuss it at that point, but I think you should take time at a workshop to discuss it and then decide. Let them present you three or four people, and then at that time, you make your decision for the next meeting, in my opinion, because I know I see three business people up here, and we don't let our employees make decisions for us. We do it. So, that's one item that I wanted to let you all know, and maybe you all have a format of doing it, and if that's the way they did it before, I think it's wrong. It's just one thing. The next item was the PSI company. It may be dead, but I understand there may be a workshop coming in. I hope you guys open it up for bid. Don't base it on one company. It doesn't sound right, you know, it doesn't show, there's no clarity when you do that, there's, you know, there's, it's no honesty, no truth. You need to be transparent and open it up for bid. And then regarding the taxes, I myself, I know it's going to go up, and we need to do it. If not, those little kids that we're here are going to be affected by it later on. They may not feel it right now, but they're going to feel it later on. You're going to see water lines breaking, all kinds of things. So, do what's right, sir, and again, like what Mr. Barnes said, go ahead and cut some of the fat, but do what's right for the city, and that's what I wanted to talk to you all about, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Longoria.
Thanks a lot.
Any other citizens' participation?
Yes, Mayor, we've got Frances. Cinderella, I can answer.
Mr. Cinderella, you recognize her.
Thank you, Mayor, councilpeople. Coming for you tonight, Frances Yankrally, 3709 San Clemente. I wasn't talking all day, I just have sinus or something else. I presented to the city secretary a binder which brings to the city, well, the mayor has it. It contains a letter and seven attachments that I sent to President Trump. I made a proposal that he considered making an international site, because I had heard that Las Vegas Ferry may be for sale, and I suggested that we build, the United States build a border museum, history of border history, on the Mexican side and on the US side, that we encourage Mexico to build a similar one and connect the two with an underground tunnel of friendship. And that also would make the crossing a year-round ferry crossing. I took the liberty to add 33 pages of letters and notes that I had over the years since Pope Francis was elected, in my efforts to bring him to the city of Mission. The closest I got was that telephone conference call that he had with David Muir at the Reston Center, and I've supported the Reston Center and their efforts, and the Catholic Charities, and all the other churches, and all the people, and all the council people, and all the cities that support that effort to help humanize the people that come across. I also, second time I'm speaking to you on this topic, on, I really strongly encourage the city and the council and Mayor to consider having some sort of person, whether it's funded by the developers who control homeowner associations, but the representation where I live is almost nil. I haven't been invited to any, allowed to attend any homeowner meetings, nor anybody else that I know of except the elite few, which is wrong and is against Texas law, and I've been threatened about not going there to conduct business, and they tried to have me arrested. And next time I come forward, I will bring names and we'll talk about it in the open. The third thing I'd like to just mention is I presented to the mayor through dropping it off at his office, a spoon, which is a mock-up. It's a spoon for grapefruit sections, and I took the liberty of saying, "City of Mission, Texas, home of the grapefruit." I'd like to give this one to our CEO of the chamber. I think it might be a nice thing to offer to our visitors and winter Texans. This quality spoon is really for the mayor and the council and the city staff and the executive dining room in Mission. So, I'll give this to, on my way out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrillo. Anybody else on citizens' participation, Ms. Carrillo?
No, Mayor, that is all.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to 1.0, the public hearings, I'm going to ask Mr. Acevedo, we're going to call 1.1A, conditional use permit, public hearing, Mr. Acevedo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for non-residential parking at 1101 Slayball Avenue, being Lot 7, Block 183 of the Mission original townsite. Property's owned R1, and Jaime Valdez is the applicant. And if the council's inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 24, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Slayball and 11th Street, along the west side of Slayball. The request before the council was to consider permitting the use of an R1 lot to be used as a parking in conjunction with the commercial auto body shop that's owned by the applicant. The lot is located at the northwest corner of Slayball 11th, as I previously stated, and we recently were made aware that there's a lot of cars that were parking along 11th Street. The business has been picking up, and a lot of the employees were parking along 11th Street. So, in meeting with the applicant, we decided that the best solution to keep the cars off of 11th Street would be to use this property as a CUP for a non-residential use. We've seen this before, and we've approved it in other areas of the city, and if done properly with an all-weather surface, this is something that can work. We're also recommending that they buffer the north side and this side to the alley because there is residential uses to those sides. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the installation of a solid buffer to the north and west, complying with some landscaping in the area, and the installation of an all-weather surface parking area. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. This is a public hearing on conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request? Go ahead, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Agida Peña Guñaga. They call me Agi for short. That's correct. There is an exuberant amount of parking from the body shop on 11th Street, and my question is, one, of course, you know, it's been recommended for approval by the planning and zoning, but I was asked to be, to make sure that, when my agenda comes up, that everything is in compliance by the time it comes to your board, for your approval, and we've met all our requirements. The request that I'm making here is that if this is going to be a parking lot, and it meets all the requirements, which it doesn't at the moment, then would that prohibit the staff from the body shop to park on 11th Street? Because 11th Street is very narrow, and we're having a difficult time getting through, even though, even if they park only on one side of the street, it's still, it doesn't allow for two cars to go and come, and there's some blind spots because of the body shop to get on Slayball. And so, I'm just making a point that if this should be approved, and it hasn't been, it hasn't met all the requirements yet, then what is this commission going to do about making sure that they don't park on 11th Street? And I've been told by the police department, I've been told by the planning and zoning department and others that we've complained about the parking on the street, that it's a public street, and that anybody can park on that street. And so, are we solving an issue, or are we just continuing with the same problem of filling up the parking, their parking, and still parking on 11th Street? So, I just wanted to make that point, and I wanted to make sure that the commission makes them adhere to these regulations. So, that's all I can say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against a conditional use permit? Please come by and stand to the podium for sure and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jaime Valdez. I'm the owner of the body shop, and I'm the one trying to get that permit for the parking. You know, we do have overflow in customer parking, or actually employee parking, but, you know, I mean, that's one of the reasons we're doing that parking. Park there, try to alleviate the parking on both sides of the street. It's its own commercial there, so, I mean, you can park on at least one side of the road. I don't think we're breaking no laws or nothing. So, that's about it. Then we try, we're going to try to eliminate that with that parking there. It's going to give us at least 20 parking spaces. I've got at least 12 employees, so that's the whole purpose of that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this permit? I see nobody coming to the podium. I'm going to close the public hearing and open it for any discussions by any of the council members.
Mayor, I move for approval.
For approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4810. In this opening for discussion, Ms. Garza.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I might have not seen this, but for how long is the conditional use permit? I don't see it on the write-up.
This conditional use permit would be for life of use. It is subject to staff review at any time during the life period, but it would be recommended for life of use.
Okay, because that's not the way it's on the agenda, so if we could maybe amend our motion to
To include.
To reflect that it is a life of use.
Because we have a motion and a second, I would have to ask you, either the person that did the second and the motion, rescind their motion, or I will entertain an amendment to the motion.
Mayor, I would like to amend to the motion to accept the recommendation of the planning and zoning, and also to amend that we set for a life of use.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to amend for life use. In this opening for further discussion, let me tell you that I'm going to be asking for the vote for the amendment first, and then the actual ordinance second. Those that are in favor of life use, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The amendment passes, so now we have the motion on the floor and second to accept the conditional use permit as for life. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and I'll call 1.1B, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to place a hot dog stand at Minimax Number 5 Convenience Store. This is at 100 North Mayberry Street, Lot 53 of Mayberry Plaza Number 2 subdivision, and this property's owned C2 Neighborhood Commercial, and Muller Hardron is the applicant. On July 24, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of First Street and Mayberry, within the Minimax Number 5 Convenience Store. The applicant wishes to place a food cart for the sale of hot dogs on the west side of the Minimax Number 4 store. It would be as depicted here in this site plan. The hours of operation would be Thursday through Sunday from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. with one employee manning the hot dog stand. In 2016, the city council passed an ordinance in which portable buildings and food carts were no longer allowed. While there are some that were grandfathered, no more carts were allowed after this period in 2016. Then an amendment made the mobile food units allowable again, meeting certain criteria. The definition in our city ordinances for allowable food trailers is as follows. A mobile food unit is defined as a food service operation mounted on a chassis which is designated to be towed over roads or mounted on a motor-propelled vehicle. What is being requested, a hot dog stand is your typical three-feet-by-six-feet hot dog stand, which I don't personally feel it meets the definition of what is allowed. After conferring with our city attorney, he also does not think that it meets the definition of what is allowed. However, the applicant disagreed with our interpretation, thus he requested to be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board did approve the use of the hot dog stand. Staff is recommending denial as allowing this hot dog stand would set presidents and others would want the same treatment. Our city manager is also recommending denial. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. I don't see anybody approaching the podium. I will open it for discussion for any of the city council persons. Do I hear any discussion?
I just want to make it clear. In essence, you're saying that this would violate one of our own ordinances if we were to grant this CUP. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, that's
It would violate the ordinance, or it would not comply with the criteria of the ordinance.
It would not comply with the criteria.
So, the ordinance wouldn't govern it.
Well, isn't it the same thing?
Not necessarily. I mean, I don't know about legal, but
The way it is right now, Mayor, it doesn't comply with the ordinance. The owner was arguing that in the past, he has had a stand there, therefore, he thinks that he actually qualifies for being grandfathered in, because he was there in another hot dog
It would violate the ordinance or it would not comply with the criteria of the ordinance.
It would not comply with the criteria.
So, the ordinance wouldn't govern it.
Well, isn't it the same thing?
Not necessarily. I mean, I don't know about legal, but
The way it is right now, Mayor, it doesn't comply with the ordinance. The owner was arguing that in the past he has had a stand there, therefore he thinks that he actually qualifies for being grandfathered in, 'cause he was there in another hot dog stand before the ordinance changed. But the way it is right now, if he were like a new hot dog stand, he would not
Does he pay sales taxes if he would open the hot dog stand?
Would he pay sales taxes?
Would he pay sales taxes?
It's part of the convenience stores.
Part of the convenience store, right?
Yes.
'Cause that corner there, you know, has had businesses that come and go there, you know, and promoting more business in that area may be, may be a good thing, you know, a good thing. And hot dogs are very popular in that, in that neighborhood, you know, especially since I grew up in that neighborhood, you know, as far as that is concerned, so.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Was our advisory board advised over the changes that we've made in previous? 'Cause I see that they approved, but yet our city manager disapproved.
Yeah, it was explained to them the history and what the council has, has, I guess the amendments that have been made to the mobile food truck ordinance over the past few years. It was explained to them.
Okay.
Other than hot dogs, what else would you be serving?
That would be it, Mayor, it's
Pretty much hot dogs.
Small hot dog stand.
Small, small business.
And it's not even gonna be open all week, it's just Thursday through Sunday.
Thursday through Sunday.
But it would be a food truck, right?
It's, it's your typical hot dog stand, like the ones you see on the side of the roads and
All other one that went closed over there.
The one that comes to mind is one in, on Inspiration, South Inspiration Road, next to, next to a grocery store.
My only concern with this is that if we've already set a precedence and we should enforce it, 'cause we've already talked about it and so we've said no. And who have we not allowed to do the same thing or denied? And so, I think, is there a particular reason, Randy, why you denied it?
So, I have to, one of the things that I look at is, is what is currently, what currently reads in our ordinance and so, based on the, my interpretation of the definition, it didn't fit that description and that's the reason why.
I would like to make a, make a motion to deny the request as recommended by our staff and our city manager.
Second.
We have a motion, second to deny the request for, not to allow, the request to go in. In this, I open it for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye opposed? Because I'm pro sales tax and hot dogs. Motion passes, but it does not, but the motion is to deny the planning and zoning request, am I correct?
Correct, which would require a supermajority from the council.
So, which means that we have to call a vote by hand.
It's required by five, so
Yes, so I have to, I have to poll you now. Ms. Choa, your indication, please.
Yes.
Yes, what?
Deny.
Okay, second, Mr. Plata. I'm against the denial and in favor of the
Approval.
Pro, Ms. Garza?
I'm, I deny
Okay.
The application.
Deny.
Deny. So, it's denied 41 for the, by poll, okay, which makes it four fifths.
Yes.
So, the recommendation from the planning and zoning, according to our ordinance, it can be reversed.
Correct.
And it will be reversed, okay?
I'm sorry, what was?
Mayor.
According to a recommendation of the planning and zoning
Yes.
Because the planning and zoning recommended approval.
Right.
Because of a four-fifth majority, that recommendation is gonna be reversed and the, then the permit's gonna be denied.
Yes. Well, I don't know that their recommendation is reversed, it's just up, our, our approval, I mean, denial is what is upheld.
Yes.
Is that right?
Correct. Boy, it goes against the recommendation.
It goes against the recommendation of the planning and zoning.
Right. But they're, well, it doesn't matter, we can go to the next item.
Mayor, I just have a question, Mayor. So, if we, Mr. Acevedo, if we in the past have set in policy or the ordinances that we didn't want these type of businesses in our city, why are we hearing it today? Like, I understand that they have the opportunity to apply for whatever permit, but are citizens explain the ordinance that we have already developed?
Yes, and the applicant felt that the definition that we have currently did not apply to his operation, so that's why he felt that we should present it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration.
And how much did he have to pay for that?
$250 is standard fee for all applicants.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, you have some legal advice to let us know or?
Other than the fact that if you wish to approve it at a later date, we'd have a variance against, which is not irregular.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Public hearing, 1.1Z, conditional use permit, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for a home occupation. This is a licensed child daycare at 4204 San Román, being Lot 26 of Paseo Lindo Phase Two subdivision. This is at the Sherland Plantation and Nora Argüelles is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 24th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit renewal request. The subject site is located approximately 400 feet east of Santa Inggrasia, along the south side of San Ramon. The applicant wishes to retain her conditional use permit. She has been in operation at this location since 2015. She was first approved for one year and then she was approved at a later date for three additional years, so this will be the, the third time that she comes in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. herself and her daughter run the registered home. The applicant, again, has been in operation for four years and her living room was converted into the, the area where they take care of the children. As you can see on the pictures, there's no signage to indicate that this is a daycare. She doesn't have any signs and she's got a two-car driveway and her garage where people can safely drop off the children. I did ask the applicant how many children her and her daughter take care of and she claimed that it varies, it varies between six up to, the maximum that she's allowed is 12, but they're all from the ages of two to four. She deals with mainly smaller kids. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a three-year reevaluation in order to monitor the childcare facility, continue to, to be certified with the Texas Department of Human Services and that they continue to comply with the home occupation portion of our zoning code. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing, item 1.1C is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, so I'm gonna close this public hearing and I'm going to move to listen to any of the council persons if you have any questions.
We don't have any questions.
You wanna put out the
For approval is presented, Ms. Garza.
We have a motion on the floor and we have a second for approval or disapproval of ordinance 48-11. Any final notes by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance 48-11 is approved. Conditional, the public hearing, letter D, public hearing for conditional use permit, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to place a portable building for educational purposes. This is for tutoring services, citizenship classes and GED preparation. This is at 511 West 11th Street, the east fraction of lots one and two of Block 178, Mission original townsite. The property is owned C4, heavy commercial, and the applicant is Ms. Agi Peña Aguñaga. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 24th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located approximately 200 feet west of Quica de la Garza Loop, along the south side of 11th Street. And the site currently has a 73 by 20 portable building, which was moved in and originally was used for storage, which is allowed in a C4. Now, the applicant desires to operate the citizenship and GED preparation business from this portable site. These pictures were taken today and what we see here is that they were getting ready to install the parking lot facility, so that was one of the requirements of the conditional use permit. The proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. It would be closed on Sundays. Total of two employees will operate the business and there is some requirements that were imposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Some of them were the, the parking in the front of the building and there was also a requirement to install a solid cedar fence on the south side because there is a residential home behind this building. There was public opposition during the PNC meeting, Mr. Valdez and, and someone from his family did show up in opposition of their request. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this conditional use permit. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation in order to assess this new operation, the installation of an all-weather surface parking facility, complying with all building setbacks and complying with building fire and health codes. There was a variance also that was issued by the zoning board of adjustments because it wasn't meeting the setbacks on the west side. They own a portion of the property, but the other portion belongs to the United Irrigation District. I did receive confirmation from the United Irrigation District that they are not in opposition of granting this conditional use permit. We also ask that they comply with the sign landscaping and fence buffer codes and that they acquire a business license prior to any occupancy. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing, item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Agueda Peña Guñaga, they call me Agi for short. And I am in favor of this conditional use permit. I would appreciate very kindly to be allowed to serve the citizens of the city of Mission, where actually I grew up in that same location. And I thank you and I thank the Planning and Zoning Department for all the hard work they've done in helping us get to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm gonna close this public hearing and open it for any discussion by any of the council members, any specific discussions.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Will we entertain the motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
I'll second, I just have a question.
Let me, let me acknowledge the motion and the second. We have a motion and a second and this I open it for further discussion. Mr. Plata, you have the floor.
Why do we have a variance? Why not a variance, but are we supposed to get the permits before we start building?
Well, we wanted it to all be in compliance prior to coming to the city councils, that's why we, we went through the variance process with the zoning board of adjustments, so that she would already be legal to start her operation.
Did they build that building on-site or?
No, it's, it's actually
It was purchased, right?
This something that was purchased and moved in.
Yeah, it was purchased and moved in, that's why. It was already predetermined size.
Correct.
But the variance is because part of the building is on another owner, is that correct?
That is correct. This is part of the United Irrigation District property. Ms. Peña initially had a survey that showed it as her property. The irrigation district had their own survey, they went back and forth and they ended up leasing the property from the irrigation district and she was authorized the use of this area for her conditional use permit business.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance 48-12 is approved, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is a public hearing and I'll call Mr. Perez, public hearing.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is a city's preliminary budget for fiscal year 2019-2020, which was presented on July, presented on July 26th and has been made available to the public for review in the city secretary's office and the city's website as required. It was published on July 26th in the Progress Times and this is a public hearing regarding the preliminary budget.
This is a public hearing on fiscal year 2019-2020 preliminary budget. Any input from the audience at this time? This is a public hearing on fiscal year 2019-2020 preliminary budget. Any feedback or any input from the audience? This is a public hearing on, for fiscal year 2019-2020 preliminary budget, any feedback from anybody from the audience? I do not see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm gonna close the public hearing. I don't think we have to take any action, am I correct? Mr. Martinez?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm gonna move to 2.0 consent agenda. I wanna remind the council that is there any line item of 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7, 2.8, 2.9, 2.10, 2.11, 2.12, 2.13, 2.14, or 2.15 that you would like to pull out before we vote? Let's be clear right now on the onset. And if not, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda item.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, but I will have a question on one of the items.
Okay, so which number is?
Actually, I, I can lump it, 2.8 and 2.9.
2.8, 2.9?
My question.
Okay, we'll, we'll do an individual.
But, okay, but my motion is to accept the consent agenda, not to pull it out.
Okay.
Okay. 'Cause it doesn't, it doesn't matter what the answer is, but I just want it answered. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
Am I confusing you? Yes?
Well, let me, let me, I'll let, let me finish the
Sure.
You're not pulling it out, that's what you're saying?
No.
Neither one, okay. Do I hear a second?
Some discussion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7, 2.8, 2.9, 2.10, 2.11, 2.12, 2.13, 2.14, and 2.15. I will open it for discussion for
I just have a quick question. My question is on 2.8 and 2.9. Have, did we solicit qualifications last year or are we gonna do this on an annual basis? I guess that's my question.
This is at the end of a three-year cycle.
Three-year cycle?
So, we've had these two, the surveyor and the appraisal services for three years now.
Okay, well, time flies then, okay.
Three years, since 2016, 2016.
Okay, that was, I just wanted clarification on that.
No further questions?
None.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I don't see any ordinances or resolution numbers, am I correct, Ms. Carrillo?
No, sir, there was none.
I will call 3.0 approval and authorization with 3.1, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.1 is a, is for a homestead exemption variance. This is for a 2.36 acre tract of land out of the northeast half of Lot 28-4, west addition to Sherland subdivision. The property is owned AOI and Sergio Fonseca is the applicant. On July 24th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this homestead exemption variance. The tract is located 300 feet south of Mile Two Road, along the west side of Holland. On April 23rd of 2018, the city council had authorized this homestead exemption for Mr. Fonseca. However, Mr. Fonseca did not start construction of the house of his primary residence. Since the homestead exemption is only good for one year, Mr. Fonseca had to reapply now that he's ready to start construction of his home. now that he's ready to start construction of his home. Water and sewer services are existing. We have a 10-inch sewer line that's located along the east side of Holland and then we have a 12-inch water line that's located along the west side of Holland. With regards to streets and storm drain, the subject site has frontage to Holland Road, which has 80 feet of right-of-way and an additional 20 feet of right-of-way will need to be dedicated by Mr. Fonseca. Other comments is that they must comply with the model subdivision rules, must dedicate water rights, and any street lights would also be waived by the homestead exemption as are the park fees. There was no opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the dedication of the additional 20 feet of right-of-way along Holland and that they comply with all homestead exemption variance requirements, which do require them to come in and sign an affidavit with the city. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 3.1 is now before you.
Do I hear any?
Mayor, I'm to approve.
We have a motion on the floor and second, and this is open for discussion for any of the council persons. No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.1 is approved, Mr. Acevedo. 3.2, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.2. In item 3.2, staff is seeking authorization to reject and resolicit bids for the Weedy Lot Abatement Program. Staff received two bid responses. Both bidders were lacking information. The lowest bidder does not have references or his solicitation signed or the add, addendum?
Addendum.
Addendum checklist. The pricing for the next lowest bidder is not fair and reasonable in comparison with other municipalities' pricing and with the internal cost estimate. Staff is recommending that we reject and resolicit bids for the Weedy Lot Program. Our city manager is also recommending that we reject and resolicit. Item 3.2 is now before you.
What is the wishes of the council?
Mayor, I'm to approve the solicitation, the to reject and resolicit for bids for Weedy Lot Abatement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, on the next item.
3.3?
Yes, I would like to see we could go into executive session for Attorney Counsel.
I will ask the, our city manager, our city attorney.
We turn to Andy. You have a question?
And since we're going to go back in there, I would like to also visit 3.17. 3.17. So, we don't have to go back and forth. So, the two items, 3.3 and 3.17.
Just a question, a real question.
Yes.
I'm trying, I'm trying to look for 3.17 on the agendas.
There is a trust that we engage highest qualified firm.
It's the auditing stuff.
And are you going to do executive?
Okay.
It's up to the mayor. Mayor, would you like to also include the items on the executive session so we don't have another executive session? That would be up to you.
If you're moving on to work, you can go ahead and take care of the two.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to VTC government code section 551.001 and to include 3.7, I mean, 3.3 for legal questions only and 3.17 for legal questions only. Am I correct?
3.3 and 3.17.
Do I hear a motion?
And also what's in executive, right, mayor?
Yes, plus what's in executive.
Did I already make a motion? I thought I had.
So, do I hear a motion?
I'm.
I made that motion.
Okay, we have a second.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries into executive session. The chair wants to entertain a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene from executive session pursuant to VTC government code section 551.001. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The chair is going to make some adjustments on the agenda items and 6.0 is going to be called first under 6.1A. Mr. Martinez, legal?
Mayor, do you require a question? Do you need a motion to waive the remaining Weedy Lot balance of a lot following?
I'm to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion by any of the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 6.1A is approved. 6.2A, we have no action, 6.2A. I'm going to call agenda item 3.3. Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In item 3.3, we are seeking authorization to engage with negotiations with M2 Engineering PLLC for the City of Mission design manual update, the standards manual. Since they were the only vendor who submitted a bid and met all the required specifications, the estimated cost is $28,000. Staff is recommending authorization to engage M2 Engineering PLLC. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 3.3 is now before you.
I move to deny.
You move what?
To deny.
You move to deny?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you going to call for discussion?
Well, yeah, we can call for discussion. Let me retract and call for discussion.
Yes, all right. Yes, the reason that I'm, I made the motion to deny, I'm not, I'm not at all saying that we, that our design manual is up to date, but I do feel that, that our staff, including JP and Robert Salinas and Jaime, together have, could update this manual until, until we get the drainage assessment completed and then at that time possibly, you know, then do the complete manual update. And I know that it's only $28,500 that we're looking to spend, but at this point, our financial situation, I think we should start, we should save anywhere where we can and 28,500 is 28,000.
Mayor, I'd like to ask our engineer, JP Terraza, a question.
Where is JP? Well, there he is.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. JP Terraza, city engineer, for the record.
I'd like to know if with all the work that you have, is this something that you could do?
And this is about the, the one, I'm sorry, I work in late.
Updating the manual.
Updating the design manual.
You should design the manual, the one that we've had since 1980.
1980, yes.
1988 that has not been designed and staff could have had plenty of time to, from 1988 to now, to upgrade and publish, but we haven't. Go ahead, sir.
It takes a lot of research and some, update some standards, so, yes, it takes a lot of work and we're short of staff. I don't think we can do it in-house.
How many staff members do you have that are assigned to you?
Me.
Who do you?
Yes.
One.
I would like to take that 28,500 and get JP some help, even if it's part-time. I mean, that would be a part-time person. Because JP, that, you're not.
So, you're changing your statement?
I'm still saying to deny the, no, I'm not changing my thought. I'm denying the item.
Okay. No, I'm not talking about that, about your rationale behind your thought. Anybody else?
Thank you for your answer, JP.
Thank you.
Thank you for your honest answer, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any of the council members, any questions?
Well, my, one more comment would be is if we waited this long, we can certainly wait until we get the drainage assessment.
I think this manual is not isolated to a drainage assessment. Am I correct, Mr. Acevedo? This is a comprehensive for the planning and zoning and it is a guide that we use on a daily basis to operate for the city.
That's correct.
And right now, we're using the 1988 guide.
I, Mayor, yes, there is some standards that are attached to drainage. Yes.
But not all, not solely.
No, no.
Not by isolation.
Correct. There's a couple of, I want to say, a good chunk of standards on drainage.
Yes.
Yes.
I understand that part, but not solely for drainage.
Right, right.
Do we have money on the budget for this particular line item, Brandy?
So, we would, we do, we would, not necessarily designate it for this particular line item, but we do have in, within the budget that would allocate for this.
You know, we're going to meet tomorrow to go over.
We're going to meet tomorrow to go over the budget and maybe to see what we can eliminate or cut, so maybe we can wait on this item. I mean.
Do you want to, you want table or take an action?
We have a motion on the floor, sir. I hate to put you out of order, sir.
The table takes precedence over any motion.
But I still would have to recognize the motion.
But I could move to table and then we could vote on that. Is that right?
Yes.
Well, then I move to table the item until after our budget hearing or workshop.
We have a motion to table?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second? This is open for discussion?
We can table till the budget.
Huh?
We can table till the budget after the budget meeting or whatever it is.
You want to wait till later?
Yeah.
I think, if, Mayor, if I could say a few words. I think that, I don't know what the budget is going to say at the end if we're going to be able, I would love to hire more staff to help the engineering department, but as of now, the city has always entered into contracts with different agencies to help us in this and I think that this is something that's needed. I don't wish to table if we want to vote.
Okay. I don't wish to table it either because we gave the opportunity for all the engineers. We bid it out and we, and they had the option of bidding and they chose not to, you know, so. So, I don't.
Where do we advertise? I'm just curious.
Mr. Purchasing Agent, please.
We advertise in the monitor and our city website and we send out email invitations to firms inviting them to submit their proposals for qualifications.
Is this a normal thing to only just get one bid?
No, we tend to get multiple proposals or bids on all of our procurements. We did have a pre-proposal meeting inviting firms to attend like we do on all of our procurements to educate them on the requirements that we have in our solicitations.
Okay.
I also got, before I asked for it to go to bids, I had one of the engineering firms, when we discovered it, that it was in the 80s that we, that same engineering firm that did it back then came to my office and asked for it, for us, for him to renew it and update it and he gave me a proposal quote and to me it was too high, so I asked our city manager to proceed with bidding it out for all the other engineers to be able to give us an appropriate competitive bidding bid.
Yes, that's part of the research that we tend to do to, to see the market and the opportunities that we tend to offer our firms and our vendors. So, we found the need and that's the reason why we solicited for qualifications.
Okay.
Any other?
No.
I will entertain the voting for, for the tabling of the motion as first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I move to table.
All those opposed?
Name.
Same sign, name. Mr. Acevedo, you need to declare a vote.
Oh, I said we're going to table it for the next.
You need to declare whether to table it or not to table it.
To table it.
You table it, so you're in favor of table it.
Table it till next.
So, it'll be tabled at 3 to 2. Okay, thank you, Mr. Acevedo. We'll call you for 3.4, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.4 is a final plat approval of Las Palmas del Norte Number 3, Phase 2 subdivision. This is a tract of land containing 26.29 acres situated in Hidalgo County, Texas and also being part or portion of Portion 50. This is in a rural ETJ and the developers, Mrs. Noralinda Garza, the engineers, Javier and Jose, engineering. And the subject site is located 270 feet south of Mile 5 North Road between La Homa and Benson Palm Drive. The subdivision consists of 43 single-family residential lots, all of them exceeding the minimum requirements for onsite sewer systems. These will be on septic tanks. The water CCN belongs to Sherland Water Supply Corporation and drainage will be onsite. We did a field visit and we did note that the subdivision looks to be completed, so we're ready to move forward and recommend this to the county of Hidalgo for their final blessing. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve it. Staff and city manager are recommending approval. Item 3.4 is now before you.
Any?
Mayor, I'm to approve based on the recommendation of Planning and Zoning and staff.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Abstention.
One abstention? Oh, I, I.
That's her property.
Well, she, she, but she has to file an affidavit, right? You have to file a written form?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
She needs to file a written form, so.
Yes, that's, that's.
3.5, approval or resolution, Mr. Flores?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is a, this item was brought before you approximately 90 days ago. At the time, we were just going to go ahead and suspend the action. AEP filed an application with cities retaining original jurisdiction seeking to increase system-wide distribution rates by 38.3 million, which would have been an impact of about $4.75 per month per customer. The action that the city, let's see, excuse me, this, this time period has permitted the city through its participation with cities served by the AEP Texas to determine that the proposed rate increase should be denied. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I have a motion for resolution 1606?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and second, approval of resolution 1606. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 1606 is approved, Mr. Flores, and I'll call 3.6. Mr. Flores?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is for the Safe Routes to Schools grant. This is through TechDOT. This is 100% grant, so there's no matching funds on the city side. This is to construct new sidewalks and safe routes for our children to and from school will extend existing pedestrian and bicycle systems. This, to, if you approve this, this will authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city on all matters pertaining to the application. The three schools are Pearson Elementary, Ogrady Elementary, and Castro Elementary. They are very favorable ranking according to the grant rules. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
What is the amount of the grant?
Currently, we are sitting at approximately $300,000. That would.
I hear a motion to approve resolution 1607 as described by Mr. Flores.
Mayor, I'm to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Flores, your resolution 1607 is approved, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. 3.7, Ms. Ledermer?
Mayor and Council, 3.7 is the authorization to enter into an agreement with CGI Communications for a street banner program. The National Civic League has partnered up with this particular company to offer all the All-America City finalists 20 banners to include the hardware, the installation, and the maintenance of these particular banners. And then furthermore, they would like to continue enhancing the promotion of the All America City by offering these banners to the, to the local businesses. This would have no monetary, you know, expenses. This would have no monetary, um, you know, expenses on behalf of the city of mission. They would ask us just that we provide a letter of support saying they're in our community, and, um, we would be responsible for giving them the design, the approved design, as well as the area where these banners would be put into. So, this is a, a charm key project for us. Uh, staff and city manager recommend your approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Open for discussion for any of the city council persons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, three point seven is approved, Ms. Lermah. Three point eight, Ms. Carrillo?
Uh, yes, Mayor, Council, this would be approval of ordinance forty-eight thirteen, and this is amending Article Two, City Council, Section Two dash thirty-four, Procedures for Presentations to City Council. Um, Mayor, Council, House Bill twenty-eight forty was passed during the eighty-sixth legislative session, which is now going to allow citizens to speak on items that are on the agenda. And this House Bill also authorizes for the governmental entity to go ahead and set some, you know, procedures that we're gonna be following, and that way we can be uniform with everybody. Um, what we are recommending is for the person that wants to speak on an item on the agenda, for them to sign up, just like they do right now, for them to go ahead and advise us which item they want, wish to speak on, and they will be given the same, the three-minute, uh, you know, courtesy as anybody, you know, anybody else that would wish to speak. This will be done during citizens' participation. Now, if it is in the public hearing section, then there is no need for them to sign up because that's when they have the opportunity to speak.
Well, there's an item on three point three, you know, and people would like to do public hearing. They do that under citizens' participation or three point three...
What we're recommending is during citizens' participation. I kinda went back and forth with, you know, I belong to a city secretary group and, um, you know, so that way it doesn't disrupt too much the process of the meeting, and I spoke, you know, with, with, with our legal, we kinda felt that it would be better to do it all at one time, and that way we wouldn't have people, you know, coming at all different items, and then our meeting was not going to, you know, really flow properly or give the proper attention to those particular items.
And that's okay within the law?
That is very okay within the law. It's very reasonable, and it's done by the cities, and it would, uh, like Ms. Anna said, it, uh, it would not stem the flow of the meeting as it's going.
And this takes effect, uh, Mayor, on September the first.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, so we're just recommending approval of this ordinance forty-eight thirteen to establish the procedures.
So moved.
We have a motion to accept ordinance forty-eight thirteen as described by Ms. Carrillo. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, yeah, open, open for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, approval of ordinance forty-eight thirteen, Ms. Carrillo.
Thank you.
And, uh, approval of resolution sixteen oh eight, Ms. Carrillo.
Uh, yes, Mayor, Council, this is adopting and implementing a gross receipt tax. Basically, it's a prize fee on the conduct of bingo as authorized under Texas House Bill nine fourteen. Uh, House Bill nine fourteen was also approved in the ed, uh, eighty-sixth legislative session, requiring a licensed authorized organization conducting a bingo game to collect from a person who wins more than five dollars a fee in the amount of five percent. The organization then remits this five percent of the amount, uh, to the Texas Lottery Commission. Basically, what this resolution does is allows us to opt in to this particular program where, in other words, the Texas Lottery Commission will then give the city two-point-five percent, you know, of that particular, uh, fee. But we need to pass a resolution to advise Conway Bingo right now that we are gonna participate in this so that they can start collecting that fee.
So, it'll be similar to the way we set up our, our sales tax.
Yes, sir.
The sales taxes are paid to the state, and then the state will send us a...
Yeah, yes, sir.
They'll cut us a check.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do, I hear a motion?
Move to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, ordinance, uh, correction, resolution sixteen oh eight. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, uh, resolution sixteen oh eight has been approved. Sixteen oh nine, resolution, Ms. Carrillo?
Uh, yes, Mayor, Council, this is supporting the Texas Department of Transportation Construction Project, which is known as the Hidalgo County Loop Project, and it's in support of the three sixty-five tollway. Uh, this resolution along with the letter of support would be submitted to the Texas Department, uh, Commission, supporting this project, which is gonna be a part of the Hidalgo County Loop. Uh, the project is gonna alleviate traffic flow, specifically, uh, heavy freight traffic in and out of Hidalgo County. And of course, the city is located, you know, centrally in Hidalgo County and is impacted by this, um, flow of traffic, particularly heavy, um, freight traffic, so staff and city manager are recommending approval of resolution sixteen oh nine.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion, the second to approve resolution sixteen oh nine, supporting the three sixty-five tollway project, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, resolution sixteen oh nine approved, Ms. Carrillo.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Three point eleven, Mr. Belmaris?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, bring before you item three point eleven, authorization to purchase furniture for the Bandwood Gym Expansion through Office Depot via state-approved contract NIPA Region Four, ESC R fourteen-two-two-one-two. We, uh, requested a proposal for the furniture in a total of seventy-seven thousand eight-eighty-two-point-zero-five from Office Depot. This will be, um, for the Bandwood Gym Expansion via the state cooperative contract. Staff's recommendation is authorization to purchase. The, the proposals attach to the agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Do I, do I hear a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vela, and this is open for discussion. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Belmaris, uh, you're authorized to purchase the furniture.
Thank you, sir.
Three point twelve, Mr. Arrevalo?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, three point twelve, I'm seeking authorization to reject and rebid, uh, and rebid for boys and girls kept athletic uniforms. Uh, lowest bidders were found non-responsive by not submitting the bid bond, cashier's check, and/or addendums. Responsive bidders pricing was not fair and reasonable. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve authorization to reject and rebid. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, in the past, we've had a couple of agencies that have done this work for us. Did they even bid?
Uh, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They, they were, they were on the, on the bid process.
And we reject and obit?
Yes.
Because of prices and not responsive?
Yes, so...
I think in the future, and I've talked to Mr. Belmaris about this, uh, but maybe jointly we can, uh, get together with all the businesses that do apply, because there's a lot that don't know about the check that they have to submit, and that makes them ineligible for this process.
What we're proposing this time around is to make a pre-bid mandatory.
Okay.
That way, we have the opportunity to educate our vendors in terms of what is required for them to submit their bid.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe let's do the standard on major projects. You know, projects around sixty, seventy thousand, you know, or above fifty thousand, anything above fifty thousand require a pre-bid, uh, conference for the sake of education.
Yes, sir.
Any other question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, you're authorized to reject and, and to rebid, Mr. Arrevalo.
Thank you, Mayor.
Three point thirteen, Mr. Cardosa?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item three point one-three is the authorization to approve repayment to the Texas Division of Emergency Management for FEMA public assistance, FEMA-related projects to disaster hurricane Dolly, FEMA DR seventeen dash TX. So, the Texas Division Emergency Management came and did an assessment based on Hurricane Dolly. So, the city of mission, uh, had some damages, uh, nexus of a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. The city of mission was advanced fifty-three thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. So, last year, uh, we got an audit from Texas Division Emergency Management, uh, dated June twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen. They found that our projects, uh, had sustained an estimated cost of zero repayment to that. So, now, Texas Division Emergency Management has tasked with, uh, recouping that amount from the city of mission and repaying that to the federal government. So, what we have proposed is that we repay them in four equal installments, uh, beginning next budget year twenty-twenty to begin October fifteenth of twenty-nineteen, July fifteenth, April fifteenth, and July fifteen of twenty-twenty, which would cover the cost of the fifty-three-thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Staff and city manager are recommending approval for this plan of action that we have submitted to, uh, Texas Division of Emergency Management.
May I recommend to approve based on the staff and city manager recommendation?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, first and second, I have some questions, Mr. Perez. Where are you gonna get the money from?
So, if... Yes, sir, uh, so this is, this is something that, that we amongst staff have to allocate for, uh, regarding, uh, the repayment. This was something that was already, uh, advanced to us, and so at one time we did receive it, and so there, they are, uh, funds that we did receive at one, at one point.
And was this reflective in a two thousand nine audit report?
Well...
This, this error, because it, obviously it's an error.
So...
Because when, uh, substantial cost of zero by FEMA means that we did not, that we submitted a, a project that is not, doesn't qualify under FEMA emergency...
That is correct. There were several projects, there were twenty-three projects that were defined in the public worksheet that we sent in to FEMA. Out of that, they advances the fifty-three thousand dollars and change. So, I'll give you an example, when, uh, so we've been, we've been dealing with this since, uh, last year, uh, and mostly the finance department, Ms. Vela and her staff, uh, we were able to gather as much of the documents as we can to prove that we did the work. Uh, and one of them that was an example was the wall here got rained on, three thousand dollars to fix. At the time, we decided to say, let's paint the room. Its cost is cheaper, same color, we haven't painted it in ten years. The problem was that we didn't ask FEMA permission. We should have just repaired that, submitted the invoice, but we needed to ask permission if we wanted to do the rest of the three walls. So, that disqualifies the majority of that project and that project. Uh, and there were several projects at the golf course, the, the roof, and so we decided to say, look, we got a leaky spot here, here, and here, five thousand dollars, for example. Just replace the roof, it's old, hundred thousand. Hey, it's great, we thought we'd recurred it, and that was the question that we asked. So, Mr. David Flores, uh, sat along with, uh, the meeting that we had with TIDAM representatives, and we said, hey, we thought get a pat on the back, we went above and beyond, but no. Uh, they have that stipulation that states that we must ask permission to upgrade, uh, and more than likely, we didn't do all the projects, or if we did do them, it were all done without having that. But you are correct, Mayor, they did, were not an approved project, so that's the reason why, uh, they're asking for that amount back.
Uh, TIDAM has a special course that is offered for finance division and for people that are doing, uh, risk analysis.
That is correct, sir. Two years ago, uh, that course, the T-six-hundred course, was brought to the city of mission. It was held at the Emergency Operations Center at the Fire Department. Uh, several staff members, to include Ms. Vela, some of the staff, uh, did attend that meeting, uh, and that training, which I believe was about, uh, in six courses, uh, that was brought in. Uh, I wanna emphasize that the training to staff directors is a very important integral piece that needs to be done when it comes to the recovery piece. Texas Division Emergency Management, based on, uh, Hurricane Harvey, has identified the recovery constant piece, which we're here discussing now, is one that not only lacks in the whole state, but lacks in every single district. So, and that can only be overcome with training, uh, as you're saying, Mayor, the T-six-hundred course that allows us to analyze not only the finance department, uh, when it comes to the recovery, it, it's a all-inclusive teamwork, you know, from the emergency management, Fire Department, police chief, uh, public work, everyone, uh, needs to be abreast of that, and, and I think that's...
Mr. Cardosa, in your impromptu, if you could answer this question, what percentage of our directors completed the T-six-hundred course?
Uh, I would say approximately about twenty-five percent, sir.
So, we have seventy-five percent of the directors out that we called out that had not attended the T-six-hundred course. I would recommend to the city manager to review that, you know, and, uh, get as close as possible as a hundred percent, so we don't have to have recurrence of this.
So, I have requested the T-six-hundred course way before this. I requested it, uh, three months ago to have that come back to our city. So, uh, they have two instructors statewide, so I've talked to Chief Nem Kidd, which is the director of the state, uh, to add more, or if they allow us with some experience to teach that course along with one, one of the instructors that have to, because it's a, a week courses that they do in six phases, to come and try to do that, and as soon that I had discussed with, with our city managers, to try to get that course back for the rest, and mandate them, you know, to attend those courses.
I've taken that course, that T-six-hundred course, it's a six, six-month course, but it's only once, once a month, but they, they come in and evaluate our policies and procedures, they evaluate our forms, they evaluate, uh, you know, everything that, that, that we have in existence, and, and do corrective action all to the level of FEMA. So, you can be able to get a hundred percent of what, uh, what minimum criteria from FEMA and be able to, to be able to get the reimbursement that is appropriate for public assistance once the president declares, uh, a, a national disaster that allows for public assistance. The way we got, uh, the last, uh, the last flood here in Hidalgo County, the public assistance was approved, you know, and that gives us at least seventy-five percent of our, our money that we use, uh, in some cases a hundred percent, but at least seventy-five percent of that money that we use extra to, to respond to the national disaster and get reimbursed.
So, uh, just so you know, uh, we have been working on a disaster financial manual along with our deputy city manager, Mr. Flores, and our finance department, uh, so it's in a draft form now. Uh, it got back to me this morning, uh, with some corrections and some, so we're gonna get together with staff, and, and that should help us, uh, with a, uh, identified disaster when it is declared from here, from, uh, administration and, and the city council, the mayor, that we're able to invoke some of those, so we don't miss this in the future, and we're not tasked with, uh, having to pay...
But if we have twenty-five percent estimate of, of all our directors, uh, out in the field, and we have another emergency or hurricane in the next two, three weeks, or four weeks, or ten weeks, or, or maybe in the next ten years, at least, or, they'll, they'll be able to be, be trained in the process.
That is correct.
And it's, and in all, it's, it's all in the benefit of everybody, including our citizens, so, so I recommend that if, if it's Mr. Perez to get together with, uh, Mr. Flores and Ms. Lermah also, and, and see we can do that, okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cardosa, for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Three point fourteen, Mr. Dominguez, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item three fourteen is authorization to accept a twenty-twenty step comprehensive, comprehensive grant from the Texas Department of Transportation. The grant is designed to provide funding to enforce seatbelt laws, speed, and DWI enforcement. The grant amount is sixty-four thousand nine eighty-five fifty-three. The city mission will be required to provide matching funds in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars and fifty-three cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve.
Second.
And we have a second, and this is open for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Chief, I know that, I don't know if Mr. Perez is sending, sending you the new information on homeland security grants that are, that are open and quick, and fast?
I, I have, obviously...
Include, include a Stone Garden.
Yes, the Stone... While we already have the Stone Garden, actually, we just, uh, you all approved it in June, and the funding, uh, usually around February, that's when they ask us for those amounts. Uh, we're waiting for the COPS office to open the UNIS or HIRING grant, and right now, I'm working with the Bureau of Justice and Systems, there's a grant hopefully we can get for computers for this project that we're working on, so...
And I, and I agree, that adds a little bit more to the library.
Yes.
Software.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay, three point fifteen, Ms. Vela?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item three fifteen is approval of the June twenty nineteen financial statements. Total adjusted beginning fund balance was eighteen million seventy-seven thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. Total revenues for the month were five million seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars, and total expenditures were six million two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand five-hundred-and-sixty dollars, leaving an adjusted ending fund balance of seventeen million four-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve the financial report statement for this month.
Second.
Um, a correction for the month of June.
Yes.
Yes, for the month of June. And I have a second. Any discussion, any specific information or request, or, or question? Any discussion, any specific information or, or questions to the statement? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three fifteen is approved. Ms. Vella, three sixteen.
Item three sixteen is the approval of the tax collection report for June two thousand nineteen. Total tax levy is twenty million four hundred thousand eight hundred dollars and thirty-five cents, and total amount of collections as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, is nineteen million five hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, which represents ninety-five point eighty-three percent of the tax levy. June of last year, we were at ninety-five point seventy-five. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
You have a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and the opening for discussion. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three sixteen is approved. Three seventeen, Ms. Vella.
Item three seventeen is authorization of staff to engage the highest qualified firm found acceptable in negotiations for auditing services and authorize the city manager to execute contract incident here, too. City of Mission settled its bids on June tenth of twenty nineteen, and seven proposals were received on July twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. The agreement is for the city's annual audit requirements for fiscal years ending September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one, with two additional one-year renewal terms. The evaluation committee reviewed proposals, and six of the seven were deemed to be acceptable. Staff is seeking direction to enter into negotiations for auditing services.
We are from the office of the mayor. We're going to give you some direction.
Okay.
As far as this is concerned, we're not going to take any action tonight, and we're going to ask Mr. Perez to set up a workshop and to, to jointly, that the staff and the council will jointly in public, we're going to review the, the proposals that were submitted.
Okay.
And, and then from there, we'll, I guess we can call it a special meeting, and we'll be able to, to take, after the workshop, we'll be able to, to take this necessary action on who we're going to, to engage with, with the contract, or authorize the city manager to engage in the contract, and what we're going to try to do before October the first, so I know, I know that, that your budget ends in, in September, and, and trying to smooth it as easy as possible, put in a burden in you.
Yes. The sooner the better, because normally, they'll come in towards the end of August, September, to start doing preliminary work, so the sooner we can get it done.
We're going, you should, you should come up with a quick plan for, for that, but that's the direction of the council.
Yes.
Am I correct, council?
Yes.
Yes, oh.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you. Three eighteen, Ms. Longoria.
Mayor and Council, three eighteen is consideration of change order for Tabiza Holdings LLC for housing assistance at two oh five East Victory. The request is for a consideration of change order for remediation of septic found during the demolition phase. Change order is one point three percent of contract amount, which is less than twenty-five percent cap allowed by the Texas Local Government Code. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
I, opening for discussion, and I have a question, if, and maybe Mr. Perez could, or any, any of the directors may help, help on this question. This houses in septic tanks inside the city?
It, it was, and it was remediated.
What hap, well, probably what happened is when the, when the city took over the, or allowed the sewer system, they didn't remediate it. So what happened is, there was like a concrete pad, and then the, the family put things over it, so it was not visible, but.
But at the end of the day, once we do, we pass this, is, is the house going to be in our, in our septic services?
No, it's in our sewer system.
Or-
It'll be connected to our sewer system.
To our sewer source.
Which it is currently, that was, it left there.
Something that was discovered.
So this is kind of an isolated thing that happened in the, you discovered the tank-
It had maybe one or two.
Yeah, you discovered the tank, and you gotta, you gotta remedy the, the tank, but it's not connected to the house.
It was.
Okay, that's, that'll answer my question, Ms. Longoria. Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three nineteen, Mr. Salinas.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I come before you seeking approval to purchase two hydroflow pumps for the North and South Water Treatment Plant from a sole-source vendor. South Water Treatment Plant, well, water pump requires a twenty-eight-hundred gallon-per-minute pump, which is at thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars, and the North Water Treatment Plant Filter Transfer Pump requires a forty-two-hundred gallon-per-minute pump, which the cost is at an estimated thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Can you repeat that, sir? Thirty-one thousand?
Thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the North Water Treatment Plant Filter Transfer Pump.
For each pump, or one pump?
One pump. The, the South Water Treatment Plant Well Water Pump, which is a twenty-eight-hundred gallon-per-minute pump, is at thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars, and the North Water Treatment, Treatment Plant Filter Transfer Pump, which requires a forty-two-hundred gallon-per-minute pump, is at, the estimate is at thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
So together, it's approximately forty-four thousand?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Which will, which we will be replacing with the same pumps. Attached, we have a sole-source letter from the manufacturer, Hydroflow Pump, listing dynamic pump system as an authorized exclusive vendor for such pumps in South Texas. And of course, we have the descriptions of the pumps and the estimated cost as well. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this purchase, Mayor.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve, three point nineteen. Do I open any discussion by any other members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Three point nineteen is approved, sir. Four point zero, unfinished business. I have none, and, and I want to double-check with Ms. Carrillo, there's no unfinished business?
No.
Our attorney, no unfinished business? Thank you, sir. Five point oh, routine matters. Five point one, city manager's comment. Mr. Perez?
Yes, sir. Just, again, just wanted to congratulate the children from the Boys and Girls Club, represented as well as the parks program. It's, it's something that the children look forward to in the summer, to participate in, in the Taft Games, and then also the Boys and Girls Club, which keeps them very active and, and participate in the sport, so appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Five point two, mayors, I just want to inform the public that Nancy Pelosi had church services at La Lomita this Sunday, and I want to thank the chief, Dominguez, and his staff that worked diligently with, with the Capitol Police and, and the details. We had approximately fifteen legislators from all over the United States that attended the service. It was private, it was, you know, it was not a public, a public event, but I had the opportunity to greet the delegation with, with the family from Mr. Colossus, the Colossus family from, from the boat ramp. But thank all the officers that were there, they worked diligently and, and without a, without a hiccup, you know. Then she came in, she, they took care of business, and they left safely, and wound up in their, in continuing their tour, and that's what we're all about. I just want to make sure you thank your staff. Chief. Thank you. Five point three, city council comments from Mr. Red, Mr. Redla first.
Just wanted to congratulate the kids for doing so well and all the stuff they did this summer.
Well, I echo the same thoughts. It's always nice to, to have our kids succeed outside of the valley, so that's a good thing. And also, just a reminder that we do have our budget workshop on Wednesday, is that correct?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Oh, when's our PNC then?
It's the following Tuesday.
Oh, so tomorrow is our budget workshop. Okay, so tomorrow, we'll take a look at our budget, and hopefully, we can find some money somewhere.
When is the one for the city projects that Ms. Garcia requested?
We rescheduled.
We don't have a big, that one was supposed to be on Wednesday, the twenty-first, and now it's the tax rate discussion.
Yes.
So when is that, when is the one for the, the city projects that Ms. Garcia?
We have not set date.
That, that one needs to be set up based on everyone's availability, so we can set up that.
Well, put it, put it in the agenda tomorrow to, to set it up?
Okay.
You know, because that's important, because twenty-twenty's around the corner.
That one is for one minute.
Any city projects that you want to put in the bonnet, if any people want to choose? Teblata, you're, you have the floor, sir.
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ochoa?
I would just like to commend our Mission Police Chief, Dominguez, and your staff. They did a phenomenal job on August third for the benefit barbecue for Cobros Periqueta. Not many things leave me speechless, and that day was amazing. It showed how our community is united and how we all join together for something really, really good. I look forward to all the other events that you all have to bring. I hear that you all are bringing a five K to our city in his memory and his honor, and I want to thank you for that. I know you all prepared the night before, and it was just amazing how the flow was there. People were buying plates. I hear that you all sold over ten thousand four hundred plates, and so that's really good for the family, and thank you very much for that.
Mission PD, Chinese again, chief.
God bless Mission.
Crime stoppers.
Crime stoppers also, did they bring out?
Oh, the National, yeah, yeah, that's, yes.
Oh, yeah, National, that was awesome.
Yes, National Light Out, I think it was, I don't know what the numbers were, if anybody captured, but I can tell you that it was over a thousand. It was easily, yeah.
About three thousand people.
Yes.
And brought to the event.
Three thousand at one time?
Yes.
You know, because people came and people left, you know, and.